Preview to order. My name is Steve Trifletti. I am Plymouth Town Moderator. Joining me to my left, we have Harry Salerno. He is the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee, and he's joined by the First Vice Chair, Kevin Canty. To my right, Melissa O'Reggie. She is our Town Manager, and she is joined by Lynn Barrett, who is the Director of Finance. And we welcome Dr. Gary Maestis, the Superintendent of Schools. The purpose of this preview is to provide those of you who are here at the live broadcast on March 29th at 7:00 PM, an opportunity to have an overview of the articles and the motions coming before town meeting. This will also be repeated on other times for the cablecast. Like to draw to your attention that town meeting is scheduled to begin on Saturday, April 7th at 8:00 AM at Plymouth North High School in the Center for Performing Arts. And we'll begin with opening ceremonies. Following the opening ceremonies, we will receive a State of the State report from Matthew Muratori, Plymouth State Representative, on behalf of the entire Legislative Delegation. I'll be joined by Nicole Manfredi once again as Assistant Town Moderator, and Kevin Rich from Coleman and Page will be serving as Town Counsel. So we'll also be hearing state-of-the-town messages from Kenneth Tivares, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, also from Dr. James Sorensen, the Chair of the Plymouth School Committee, and we'll also be hearing from the Plymouth Planning Board. We will be continuing with electronic voting at this particular town meeting, and we will open the special town meeting after we recess the annual town meeting. And we will continue with all of the 17 articles in the special town meeting warrant before we then dissolve the special and move on to the annual town meeting. I do have some procedural motions that we'll take up at the start of town meeting. We have a motion for additional adjourn sessions the following week, beginning on Monday evening, if we do not conclude all of our business on Saturday. We also have a procedural motion from Michael Hanlon, who is here today, and his procedural motion has to do with having voting, fixing the method of voting to electronic voting when there's a voice vote and the voice vote is questioned. At this time, we're going to begin with the special town meeting warrant, and the first article is no motion, no action. The second article is a motion to transfer from free cash, and we're going to be hearing this evening a summary from the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee, Harry Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 2. Approval of this article will increase the fiscal year 2018 budgets in the following areas. An increase of $190,000 is needed for legal services for the sewer-related lawsuits. $35,000 is needed for printing because the tax bill printing company that the town used has gone out of business and expenses have increased with the new vendor. $1,000 is needed for fire communications to cover the cost of two alarm lines, and an increase of $11,500 is needed for temporary portable toilets at White Horse Beach.
It's a majority vote, a roll call if it's not unanimous. In most cases, the Board of Selectmen are in support of the motions from the Advisory and Finance Committee. Throughout town meeting, we have many people available to answer questions. For example, in this particular article, the Town Manager would answer questions regarding other expenditures, and we have Lynn Barrett, the Director of Finance, answering questions on fuel and utility. Procurement would be handled by the Procurement Officer Pamela Hagler. Moving to Article 3, we have Mr. Salerno moves at the town vote to transfer a sum of funds from Veterans Services expenditures to pay an unpaid bill. Roxanne Whitbeck is available to answer questions. Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 3. Approval of this article will authorize payment of one outstanding invoice from fiscal year 2017 in the amount of $1,288.
Any comments or questions on this or any articles? Just let us know, and we have a podium where you can address the group. Article 4, no motion, no action. Article 5 is a majority and a roll call, and Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to transfer a sum from overlay surplus to the Nuclear Plant Mitigation Stabilization Fund. Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 5. Approval of this article will authorize the town to transfer $814,281.88 from overlay surplus to the Nuclear Plant Mitigation Stabilization Fund.
Any questions? Moving on to Article 6. This is the first article in which I received already a request from a resident to speak on this article, and so I'd like to explain to those of you who are watching, the town meeting members have rules, and one of the rules is that the moderator will recognize all town meeting members before recognizing residents. This resident also asked me if I could give him an idea as to when it would be reached, and I explained that I would not. And the reason is because town meeting controls the length of debate, and I control or oversee, facilitate the scope of the debate. So it is those of you in the room who are town meeting members that decide whether we're going to have some quick action or whether it's going to be extended due to deliberation. In addition, we have procedural rules, and that is that at any time, town meeting members can move to change the order of an article. They can also move to reconsider. So although we start at 8:00 AM on Saturday, and we will have the ceremonies and some messages, my recommendation to people who have an interest in an article is to be there gavel-to-gavel because over the years, we've seen that town meeting members can make procedural motions to change the time and the order as to when certain articles be heard. In any event, this particular resident asked to be heard on Article 6, and I have added him to a list that I am compiling on this and every other article. This particular article already of a town meeting member, and our Public Health Director, Nate Horowitz-Willis, is going to be making a brief presentation at town meeting. It's a majority and a roll call. Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 6. Approval of this article will establish a new revolving fund, a public health program revolving fund, effective July 1, 2018. The estimated revenue projection is $177,000 with a spending cap of $150,000.
Any questions or comments? Article 7, we have Mr. Salerno's motion. Lynn Barrett is available to answer questions. It's a majority vote. Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 7. Approval of this article would rescind unused borrowing authority.
Yes, thank you. Article 8 is a majority and a roll call vote. The Town Manager is available to answer questions. Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 8. Approval of this article will allocate $115,000 for the demolition and removal of structures. The town needs to have these funds available to act and demolish when needed, particularly when it is a public safety issue.
I'd like to draw the attention of those of you who are watching the live cablecast on March 29th, that on the morning of town meeting, we have notices that the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, the Planning Board, the Advisory and Finance Committee may have meetings at which time they may take action on town meeting articles. In addition, between now and town meeting, there may also be meetings of these committees or boards, and they may also be taking action. So what we're providing you this evening is what we have up to date as of March 29th. Mr. Salerno, Article 9.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 9. Approval of this article will authorize the Selectmen to sell, or lease, or transfer 11 Lincoln Street, the old town hall. The language has been written in the broadest fashion possible to leave all options open in order to obtain the most successful bid.
It's a majority vote. The Town Manager is available to answer questions. And Article 10 is also a majority with the Town Manager available. Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 10. Approval of this article will accept provisions of Massachusetts general laws allowing the town to establish a 3% local sales tax on recreational marijuana sales.
It's a majority vote. Article 11, no motion, no action. Article 12, and I believe that we have Mr. Tivares moving Article 12. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it's that the town vote to appropriate a sum and transfer a sum and authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise. And we have the language for property located off Long Pond Road. Melissa O'Reggie, do you care to comment on this article?
We are hoping that the Finance Committee will listen to us present this article again the morning of town meeting. The reason that we aren't able to fill an amount yet is this is a Chapter 61 purchase, so we already have a town appraisal, and we are just waiting for the property owner to provide us with her appraisal. That appraisal is due on the 6th, the day before town meeting.
Thank you. So at this point, we are waiting for the recommendation or not from the Advisory and Finance Committee. It's a two-thirds vote, a roll call if it's not unanimous, and we continue on with Article 13, which is a two-thirds vote also. Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 13. Approval of this article will authorize the Board of Selectmen, acting as water commissioners, to locate and operate a proposed public water supply, well, valve control station, water mains, and other related appurtenances at Forges Field and along Jordan Road and Russell Mills Road.
And the Director of the Department of Public Works will be available to answer questions on this and the following articles. Article 14, Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 14. Approval of this article will authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept an easement from the Pine Hills, which would allow for roadway widening and reconstruction of the intersection of Long Pond Road and Clark Road. The work will be funded by A.D. Makepeace.
Thank you. Majority vote, continuing on. Article 15, two-thirds vote. Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 15. Approval of this article will allow alteration of the road layout by adding the easement obtained in Article 14 for the road widening and reconstruction of the intersection of Long Pond Road and Clark Road.
And Article 16 is a two-thirds vote. Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16. Approval of this article will allow the Board of Selectmen to accept an easement from Mass Otter Barn adjacent to the Bartlett Road Bridge. This easement will be used for the future replacement of the bridge once funding is approved.
Any questions or discussion? Article 17, Mr. Salerno. It's a two-thirds vote and a roll call.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 17. Approval of this article will increase the total appropriated for the library roof project by $900,000. Serious damage to the roofing structure beyond the rubber roof has been identified. The roof has at least 45 leaks and must be replaced.
At this time, this would conclude action unless there are additional matters to come before town meeting. At the start of town meeting, I will declare when we've reached a quorum of 90 town meeting members. Thereafter, quorum is presumed regardless of the number of people in the room unless someone questions the quorum. We ask that people come down front at the start of the article if they wish to present, and we'll be taking a recess by two hours from the start of town meeting. Lunch is being served by the Plymouth Public Schools at approximately noon, and we're making a request for any of you that would like to take advantage of a gluten-free option. We ask that you email Carrie Gillette from the Advisory and Finance Committee, and she will pass along your request to the Plymouth Public Schools. I received a motion to postpone an article, and although such procedure may be available under other rules such as Robert's Rules of Order, it is not available under our parliamentary handbook, Town Meeting Time, nor is it consistent with past practice. And the reason is, is that one town meeting cannot bind another town meeting. So while it certainly is possible to postpone the dissolution of the special until Monday evening at 7:00, or in theory, to not dissolve town meeting until a later time in the year, as a practical matter, town meeting needs to act on all of the articles that are come before the town meeting. So this would be the time at town meeting when I would be receiving a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. There could be debate, and once it's voted, we're done, and that warrant cannot be revisited. As we prepare for town meeting, for the special, we do have this yellow-covered book entitled Report and Recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee. We also have the Spring Annual Town Meeting Report, which is in orange, along with the Spring Annual Town Meeting Proposed Operating Budget. And the School Department has also provided us with a fiscal year 2019 budget book, and at least for town meeting members, we hope that you received in the mail from the Community Preservation Committee their book, which has a green cover. So we have materials, there are extra copies of Town Meeting Time at the Plymouth Public Library. We would now, at this time, move to the annual town meeting. So it was recessed, we would reopen it, and moving forward, Article 1 is withdrawn. Article 2, we move the town vote to receive the reports of several boards, offices, and committees. You'll be receiving the annual report. It's a majority vote. Article 3, Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to establish the following spending limits, and it's a majority vote and a roll call if it's not unanimous. Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 3. Approval of this article will set the fiscal year 2019 spending caps for each of the revolving funds.
And this article is also dependent upon action taken in the special town meeting, Article 6. And throughout town meeting, when articles or parts of an article relate to one another and there are changes, we have the staff available who will help us to provide updated information. And so while town meeting members will receive copies of motions in writing in advance, they may still change at town meeting, and this would be an example of one such article. Article 4, Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to authorize certain committees. It's a majority vote. Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 4. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize the Manomet Steering Committee, Plymouth Otter Committee, and West Plymouth Steering Committees to continue with the review in three years.
It's a majority vote, and Article 6 has to be the vote on authorizing annual stipends and salaries. Mr. Salerno?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 6. Approval of this article will set the annual stipends for the Board of Selectmen and Town Moderator. There are no changes to the stipend amounts this year.
It's a majority and a roll call. Article 7, we have presented to us the preliminary operating budget for fiscal 2019, and at the start of the discussion in Article 7, we have a procedural motion from Mr. Hanlon from Precinct 15, who's here this evening, and he moves to divide the motion into 11 components as grouped in the attached budget. Mr. Hanlon, do you want to explain to those watching the reason and rationale for your motion? If yes, please come up to the podium. This is the town meeting preview is coming to you live on March 29th from Plymouth Town Hall. Welcome, Michael Hanlon.
Andrew. I guess the easiest way to describe it is to, just to say that I and others that I've spoken to would like to have more discussion and debate on the town budget. We don't typically get a presentation at town meeting. I think we should have a presentation on the budget at town meeting, but maybe that's a separate motion. But we need more discussion and debate on the town budget, and we don't get enough of it. And maybe we can do that through this process.
So Mr. Hanlon's motion is a motion to divide this particular article into 11 components as they're grouped in the budget. And for those of you that are watching, and I don't know if you can see that, but this is the manner in which we receive the budget. So the first group, for example, is administrative services. If his motion carries, then we would be voting on each particular group. If it does not carry, we'll still review each group, and we will vote up or down any particular motions on line items. And I do have motions on line items, and then we would vote the budget at the end in its entirety. As we go through each of the groups, I do have a motion to amend for Article 34, and that motion to amend under Item 34 is from Mr. Hanlon, and he moves to decrease Item 34, the Department of Public Safety, Fire Department, Personal Services by $253,480. And before we go to that, Mr. Salerno, do you have any general comments you'd like to make about the budget?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Articles 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, and 7E comprising the fiscal year 2019 operating budget of $233,594,733. Reports of the Advisory and Finance Committee's budget subcommittees can be found in the article back up.
And now, at this time, Mr. Hanlon, do you care to explain your motion on Item 34 in the budget? And while he comes to the podium, I want to thank Michael Hanlon, Peter Savan, Thomas Kelly, and any other people who contact me in advance to town meeting to present motions in advance. It's helpful to me, it's helpful to town meeting, it helps increase transparency in the process, and helps everyone to be better prepared. Mr. Hanlon?
I will probably have more prepared comments at town meeting on April 7th, but very simply, I don't believe that we need four additional firefighters, and that was, that's what this is all about. This would remove those four additional firefighters from the budget.
Thank you. And we'll continue, and at this particular time, once he makes his motion, we would debate that item, and then we would, at the close of the debate, we would vote it up or down, and that would be a vote on that item. There's been some questions and discussions about who can vote at town meeting, and as moderator, I do not have the power to enforce any provision in the charter relative to conflict of interest. And therefore, if anyone raises that as an issue, certainly you can check with the town clerk to see if any town meeting members have filed a notice as to conflict of interest, but beyond that, the moderator would not be adjudicating whether or not anyone has a conflict of interest, even if it would appear to most people in the world that it was obvious. So we will continue with the debate until such time as people move to close debate. It's a motion for the previous question, a motion to close debate. Our practice is, when you make such a motion, you don't add any other argument with it, or I will not take your motion. It's to be made by itself. It's a two-thirds vote, and it is not debatable. And once debate is closed, we can vote on this item and other items as they come up. As we continue to go through the various departments, I also have a motion to amend Item 63. Peter Savan moves to decrease Item 63, the Plymouth Public Schools budget, by $2,823,405. If Mr. Savan were here, I'd invite him to the podium to speak as to this. He is not here. I will ask the Superintendent of Schools as to whether or not he could explain the position of the Plymouth School Committee as to the school budget, as well as any other comments you would care to make regarding the effect of this motion.
Yes, Gary Maestis, Superintendent of Schools. This motion for a reduction of $2.8 million, if it did survive town meeting and it was a direction of town meeting, the School Department would convene with the Board of the School Committee and determine the process that it would take to reduce the budget by that amount. I would like to inform town meeting members that $2.8 million increase to the budget is, it includes a number of features that people don't normally consider. One feature is transportation. That's a mandate, and that's a contract that would have to be funded. In addition, special education placements. In this particular budget, there's an increase of $500,000 to outside special education placements, which are IEP, Individual Education Plans, contracts that have to be managed. So with just those two items alone, we would have to cut much more than $2.8 million because we would have to fund those items in its entirety, in their entirety. So a $2.8 million budget is, would be somewhat devastating to the Plymouth Public Schools. We would have to take a look at how that would impact the school system, and the School Committee would convene to determine the process that they would like me to engage to begin that cutting process. So, you know, it's, it would be a cumbersome process, but if town meeting were to present that information to the School Committee in the matter of a vote, the School Committee would have to consider how they would want to approach that. It would be, as I said before, it would be somewhat of a difficult process.
Thank you, Dr. Maestis. With this item, as with others, we would first have the maker of the motion, in this case, Peter Savan, to be up and have five minutes to argue his motion. Thereafter, we will be hearing from the Plymouth School Committee and the Advisory and Finance Committee. I have not been notified whether the Board of Selectmen wish to be heard on this, and we would then hear debate from town meeting members before debate from any other people who wish to be heard who are not town meeting members. We would continue through the budget, and when we've completed all of the items, if there are no other issues to come before the town on Article 7, I then have been asked to do a motion, even though we will have voted all the items and we could be done, I've been asked to enter into the record a motion for the entire amount. Currently, the proposed amount is $235,752,241. So the process at town meeting is going to be, as we go through, and as we either increase or decrease items, we have our staff led by Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, and also the Advisory and Finance Committee with their secretary, Carrie Gillette, available to us to check and double-check the numbers so that, once the votes are taken, if there are any changes, you will be notified as to the amount. And in fact, in the packet of motions for those of you who are here this evening, you'll see that the motion, Article 7A to E, total budget, says, Mr. Salerno moves that the town vote to appropriate blank, and that's because we'll have it available for you to write in, but currently it is that $235 million number that I've indicated. Any questions in Article 7? If not, we'll move to Article 8. I'd like Lynn Barrett to briefly explain the change in this year's warrant since typically, in years past, Article 8 related to equipment. Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance.
Thank you. Article 8 in past years normally was the town's department equipment budget. Each department requests a certain line item of departmental equipment, anything that costs less than $15,000 and doesn't have a useful life of, say, more than five years. Because if it's greater than 15 and has a useful life of more than five years, that's taken up in Article 9, which is our capital improvements article. So this year, for the first time, what we've done is we've moved departmental equipment into the various line item budgets of each department. You'll notice with the budget that's attached at the end of the motion packet that each departmental equipment budget will be taken up during the Article 7 budget discussion. So within each department, if that particular department requested departmental equipment, there would be a separate line item for that departmental equipment. For example, the Center for Active Living, Council on Aging, they have three line items in their budget, personal services, all other expenses, and departmental equipment for $7,850. In the supplemental report that we'll hand out at town- town meeting, we will provide to you a listing of the departmental equipment for each department, something that is similar to what you've seen before. But this way, what we decided to do was, instead of departmental equipment being voted in a separate article, because separate articles tend to last for more than one year, if the project hasn't been purchased or the project hasn't been completed, it continues on for another year. And we thought very strongly that the department's division heads need to be more accountable for the equipment that they're requesting, and if they need it in a particular fiscal year, then they will spend it within that fiscal year. That way, if, if they don't need it, then the budget line item will close out at the end of the year. And because town meeting's voting on it separately, they can't use it for any other type of expense or salaries. It's, it's strictly only for departmental equipment.
Thank you. And as we move to Article 8, it's a majority in a roll call. Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 8. Approval of this article will establish a cable public access enterprise fund. Transfer the balance from the cable revolving fund to this new fund and approve the fund's 2019 budget.
And Lynn Barrett's available to answer questions. We move to Article 9, and this is typical, our capital projects article, and we begin with the 9A items. The 9A items are grouped together, they all would have a majority vote, and if people have questions or wish to vote any of them individually, we can do that. Otherwise, we'll do the entire group. Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 9. Capital requests totaled $47.9 million for fiscal year 19. The town manager recommends projects totaling $24.5 million, and the Advisory and Finance Committee is in agreement with that recommendation. Article 9 addresses $16,732,672 of those capital projects. The balance of the recommended capital projects consists of acquiring land to protect the well-located at Darby Pond in, in annual town meeting Article 15A, and construction of a new fire station in North Plymouth in annual town meeting Article 10.
We then continue with the 9B items. Those items require a two-thirds vote. Mr. Salerno.
That was for both 9A and B.
And the Board of Selectmen are in support of the Advisory and Finance Committee. We could have debate on any of the items. People often ask me, how long do you think we'll have town meeting? And I can report to you that we will be starting promptly before 8, because I have the Northern Lights Musical Group from the Plymouth Public Schools performing briefly prior to the start of the 8:00 AM convening of town meeting. Rather than having you hear my gavel, they're going to hopefully help to quiet down the people in the room with their musical performance. We will begin at 8 with the opening ceremonies. We'll continue until 10, and then till approximately 12. We'll come back after lunch recess, and we normally go at least two hours in the afternoon. Depending on where we are in the warrant, we may extend beyond the 3 o'clock hour, or we may move and come back at 7:00 PM on Monday evening. We now continue in the warrant with Article 10, and Article 10 is a two-thirds vote and a roll call, if not unanimous, and Chief Bradley and the Assistant Town Manager available to answer questions. Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 10. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize borrowing $7.5 million for the design, construction, equipping, and furnishing of a new fire station at 15 Hedge Road in North Plymouth.
Thank you. And Marlene McCollum, the Assistant Town Manager, is also available, Chief Bradley, to answer questions. Article 11 is a majority in a roll call. Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 11. Town meeting approval of this article will allow expenditures totaling $654,652 from the town's promotion fund.
Lee Hartman is available to answer questions. Article 12 is withdrawn. Article 13, the town manager will be available. Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 13. Town meeting approval of this article will enable the town to accept State Highway Chapter 90 funds for repairs and reconstructions of public roads.
Article 14 is withdrawn. For those people watching who wish to be added to a speaker's list, or who wish to submit a motion in writing in advance, I can be reached at 508-746-1464. You can also email me at fst@plummetlaw.com. We'll continue with Article 15A, and on this article, I believe we have a motion. Do we have a motion now from the Advisory and Finance Committee?
Yes, the Advisory and Finance Committee will, will be moving the article. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 15A. This article will authorize the town to acquire property to protect Darby Pond and the town's water supply.
David Gould is available to answer questions. The vote is a two-thirds and a roll call, if not unanimous. 15B is withdrawn. Article 16A. I did speak with William Cohane today. He is the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. He will be making a presentation on each of the items under Article 16. Mr. Salerno.
Article 16A. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16A. Town meeting approval of this article will be to transfer $250,000 from the courthouse meals tax fund and raise $250,000 of fiscal 2019 community preservation revenues to reduce the amount of the CPC 1820 courthouse debt from 2.5 million to 2 million.
And so, on all of these, they have majority in a roll call. Mr. Salerno, any comments on the other Article 16 items?
16B, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16B. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize a $642,523 reduction to the borrowing authorization for the restoration of the Sims House using funds raised from fiscal year 2019 community preservation revenues. This will completely pay off the Sims House debt.
16C?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16C. Town meeting approval of this article will amend the vote taken under Article 12 of the 2015 special town meeting by increasing the amount appropriated by $395,000 from $705,000 to $1,100,000 to acquire the 88-acre Hi Ho Hill property off Old Sandwich Road.
16D?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16D. Town meeting approval of this article will allow the Community Preservation Committee to set aside for later spending 10% of the estimated annual revenues of the CP fund for each of the following: open space, historic research, resources, and community housing. In addition, 4% of the estimated annual revenues will be set aside for the purpose of funding administrative and operational expenses and for the interest expense on the debt.
Thank you. Article 17 is withdrawn. Article 18 is withdrawn. I would advise those of you who are watching in town meeting that, when they're withdrawn, there'll be no action. On the others, when I announce no motion, no actions, because I have not received a motion from one of the boards or committees of the town. However, if someone wishes to make a motion, even if there is no motion from the Advisory and Finance Committee or the Selectmen, School Committee, or Planning Board, I could receive motions in advance and review them. I will tell you that if a motion presents or poses a legal question, a decision as to whether I will accept it may have to be delayed until it can possibly be researched by town council, and we will not be drafting legislation on town meeting floors. So, things that would be highly complex for town meeting are not going to be items of first impression at town meeting. Rather, they need to be submitted in advance and circulated at town meeting. Article 19 is a majority vote. Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 19. Approval of this article will accept provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 83, Sections 16A through F, allowing the town to place liens on real estate tax bills when there is an outstanding sewer bill.
Thank you. Article 20?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 20. Town meeting approval of this article will accept the 10 roads listed in the warrant language as public ways.
I would also advise town meeting, there are times when there are either motions or requests for motions on articles, and if the article is presented and any action would exceed town meeting authority, then I would rule that no motion can be made because it exceeds the authority. There is one such article on the warrant, and I have previously determined that there'll be no motion, no action, because it's outside the authority of town meeting. Article 21, Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 21. Town meeting approval of this article will accept Billington Sea Road as a public way.
Article 22, and for several articles hereafter, the Director of Department of Works, Jonathan Beeter, would be available to answer questions, and they are a two-thirds vote. Mr. Salerno, Article 22.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 22. Town meeting approval of this article will approve alteration of the road layout and authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept an easement for highway purposes.
Thank you. Article 23, Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 23. Town meeting approval of this article will approve alteration of the road layout and authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept an easement for highway purposes.
Thank you. Article 24?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 24. Town meeting approval of this article will approve alteration of the road layout and authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept an easement for highway purposes.
And Article 25?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 25. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept easements from the property owner of Deer Pond Village subdivision on Bourne Road near Amanda Avenue.
Article 26?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 26. Town meeting approval of this article will amend the general bylaws by deleting Section 6 of Chapter 43 regarding the council of aging appointment of staff. The bylaw conflicts with the charter, which grants town manager authority to appoint all staff.
Majority in a roll call. The town manager is available to answer questions. On this article, Article 27, Chad Hunter, the harbor master, will be available to answer questions. Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 27. Town meeting approval of this article will amend Chapter 81 harbor of the general bylaws. The changes provide better definition, enhanced public safety, and better management practice, and are consistent with state, federal, and waterways regulations.
Article 28?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 28. Town meeting approval of this article will amend Chapter 134 ponds of the general bylaws by deleting Section 134-4 airplanes in its entirety. There was a legal case where a ticket had been issued for landing an aircraft on one of the ponds. However, the court ruled the bylaw to be unenforceable and invalid as it conflicted with federal laws. It would eliminate the confusion if this unenforceable section was removed from the bylaws.
Chad Hunter's available. Article 29. We have two substantive motions. Mr. Salerno, on your motion for the Advisory and Finance Committee.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 29-2. The property is 0.09 acres of vegetated land along the shore of Island Pond.
Betsy Hall is the Chair of the Open Space Committee, and she'll be making a presentation. We have a second motion from the Board of Selectmen. This is being made by Kenneth Tavoras, Chair, and he also moves the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of the following parcels. Melissa Origi, Town Manager.
The Board of Selectmen heard this article from the Open Space Committee. It was for all of the parcels listed in both articles, and although the Finance Committee didn't approve them all, the Board of Selectmen moved forward and took the recommendation of the Open Space Committee.
Mr. Salerno, your committee opposes this. Would you like to be heard?
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting not approve Article 29-3. The majority of the committee did not feel that a compelling case was made to take the property out of tax title and put it into permanent conservation.
Article 30 is withdrawn. Article 31, two-thirds and a roll call. Lee Hartman is available to answer questions. Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 31. Town meeting approval of this article will amend the zoning bylaw and official zoning map of the town. The bylaw has been rewritten by legal counsel and staff with input from interested parties. The current bylaw is 45 years old, outdated, has received hundreds of amendments over the years, and is not consistent with recent legal decisions. This reworking will not change the way the town does business. It is just more readable and more defendable.
Thank you. And now we move to Article 32. Article 32 is a petitioned article, and for petitioned articles, we do allow the petitioner to make a presentation up to 15 minutes, and we would first hear from the petitioner after the motion is first put before town meeting. We do have a motion from the Advisory and Finance Committee. This evening, we will first hear from Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 32. Town meeting approval of this article will appropriate $100,000 for title research on the 1,000-acre property. The intent is for the $100,000 to be used to clear suspect titles of the highest prioritized parcels. If successful, future town meetings could appropriate additional funds to continue the titled research.
Michael Hanlon, would you wish to come forward to speak briefly, as the Finance Committee has spoken on each of these articles? Michael Hanlon is representing the petitioner on this particular article. Welcome, Michael Hanlon.
Thank you. I don't have any specific comments to make tonight. I would like to make a presentation at town meeting. I hope it'll be brief. I've been going to all precinct caucuses and answering people's questions, so maybe there won't be any need for any questions, but I would make a brief presentation at town meeting.
Thank you. And the town manager is also available to answer questions. And again, this is a majority vote, a roll call if it's not unanimous. Article 33. Article 33 in the warrant is to see if the town will vote to honor John Skaglerini's option to renew and reinstate his lease for land on Plymouth Beach for another five-year period, or take in the other action relative thereto. This is by petition from Mr. Skaglerini. I'd like to explain to town meeting members and people who are watching that I've been asked, if the Selectmen determine that an article should be put on the warrant, why is it the town meeting cannot take action? Well, in this particular case, we can assume that the petition was done properly, and that there were enough signatures, and that it was received by the Board of Selectmen, and they put it on the warrant. However, it is my responsibility as moderator to determine motions. Selectmen determine the warrant, I determine the motions, the procedure, and when I received it and reviewed it, I determined that, under our charter, this particular matter is outside the scope of town meeting. So, I have ruled that this is outside the scope. This is consistent with my past practice, wherein, over the years, I have ruled a number of articles to be outside the scope of town meeting authority. The other one that comes to mind has to do with the articles in recent years related to the nuclear power plant, which, again, exceeded our authority, where there was both federal jurisdiction as well as responsibility from the Board of Selectmen. So, this would complete the articles that are on the warrant before the annual town meeting, and we would be receiving a motion to dissolve unless there were further discussion or an interest in reconsidering any of the articles. We've mentioned earlier that each of the boards have scheduled meetings on the morning of town meeting, and in addition, I understand that the Plymouth School Committee has their regularly scheduled meeting on Monday. Dr. Myestis, could you advise us as to when and where that meeting will occur?
Yes, the Plymouth School Committee will meet on Monday, and that'll be at PCIS in the lecture hall, and that will be at 7:00 PM.
And that's Monday, April 2nd, for those of you who are watching, either the live or delayed cable cast. And Dr. Myestis, will the school committee be hearing any of the articles that will be coming up at town meeting?
The school committee do not have an opportunity. The school committee do not have an opportunity to review the motion that was presented earlier this week. I will present it in my comments on Monday night, and they will have some, I anticipate that they will have some dialogue on the budget article and the motion to reduce the budget. So, I believe the school committee will take that up, and we'll have some level of discussion on Monday night.
Thank you. Again, that is on Monday, April 2nd. For those of you that are watching, we have people here with us at the great room at town hall. Does anyone else have any questions or comments before we conclude this town meeting preview? If not, I'd like to thank the members of the panel, Dr. Maestas, on behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, Lynn Barrett, the Director of Finance, Melissa O'Reggie, the Town Manager, and to my left, Harry Slurno, the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee, and Kevin Canty, the First Vice Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. We will be meeting at 8:00 AM on Saturday, April 7, in the Center for Performing Arts at Plymouth North High School. Good evening, and thank you for joining us.